Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role and establish your quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 28th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium and also silence your electronic devices.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Frost, will you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge this morning, please?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to today's board meeting. Again, as a friendly reminder, you are certainly welcome to address the board on any item that is on our printed agenda or any item that is not in our agenda. I am in receipt of one off-agenda speaker slip so far. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. That way, everyone has an opportunity to address the board if they so choose. And we do respectfully ask that you refrain from the use of profanity. We certainly respect your First Amendment rights to free speech, but would like to note that these proceedings are aired live and on tape, and a number of young people oftentimes are watching what we're doing. And so, we would ask that you please watch the language. So with that, our first item, please.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 38. For item 16, you are adopting an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.15 of the Sacramento County Code relating to delegation of county health officer authority to Director of the Environmental Management Department with respect to environmentally-based public health programs. You waived reading on this on February 11th. For item 25, you're adopting two ordinances. The first one is repealing and reenacting county building codes contained in code section, excuse me, code chapters 16.02, .04, .10, .20 through 24, .28, .32, .34, .36 through 39, and .90. You're adding 16.41 through .43 and deleting 16.08 and .458. You're also adopting an ordinance repealing and reenacting county fire prevention code contained in Chapter 1704. You waived reading on both of these on February 11th, and this concludes the clerk's notes.
Very good, thank you very much. Any member of the board wish to pull an item for separate discussion or vote or comment? Supervisor Natoli.
Very briefly, Mr. Chair, just on item 25. In my briefing yesterday, I know that as a part of this that I requested some report back. And I've been assured by Mr. Gill that we will get some report back to this board for discussion, particularly as it relates to building code, both in agricultural and agricultural residential areas, some discussion regarding accessory and/or agricultural structures, and the discussion regarding violation fees and the process around those. So, and I didn't expect those immediately, but I just wanted to note that. So, good, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I would like the record to reflect that I'm recusing from items 3 and 4 due to a potential conflict of interest. And then, on item 26, just want to make sure that we understand that this is to accommodate the District 5 district funds and it's not an open door to general funds distribution on this project.
Understood.
We've had $110,000 in district funds set aside for several years for some capital work.
I'm not complaining about that. I just want to make sure everyone knows it's not general fund.
Right.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Frost. I'd like to make a comment about item 33, please.
Item 33 is the AC Overlay Project SB1 Phase 4 bids to be received on March 26th. The environmental document is a categorical exemption.
Great, thank you. I know my colleagues and my officer are in receipt of a response from staff to a question that I had during my briefing yesterday about the intersections in District 1 not being shown in the map, the attachment to, I believe it is, to the board letter. I appreciate the response. There is, in that response back to us, mention of the fact that 14th Avenue is a shared street with the City of Sacramento, and I assume that makes it just a little bit more complicated to coordinate resurfacing, repaving. But I will tell you that that stretch between MLK Boulevard and Stockton Boulevard is getting extremely bad. So, I would just like to take this opportunity to light a bit of a fire here, bring it to the attention of our Public Works folks, that that is a priority for this supervisor, to see that we can coordinate with the city as soon as possible to get that resurfaced. It is literally causing drivers to swerve around potholes. And I know that's not unusual.
[laughter]
I'm sure every single supervisor out here has all kinds of horror stories about various roadways within the unincorporated county, but that's certainly one of the worst in District 1. Great, thank you. Okay, let's see. I think because we only have one speaker slip from the public on items not on the agenda, I think instead of making anyone wait, I'd like to go ahead and call that speaker to the podium at this point. So, we'll do that. Again, if you can keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Dan Aldrichold?
How are you guys doing? Phil Serna, good to see you.
Good morning.
Good to see you guys. Nice today. Sue Frost, Sue Peters, Supervisor Kennedy, good to see you guys. As you guys know, I don't know if you guys saw the news, but as you guys know, my Metro Home's crew, we've been fighting. You already know this, Phil Serna.
Speak up a little bit.
I said, we've been fighting to keep the American River clean.
Well, we'll raise the podium, so you don't have to lean in there.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Me and my Metro Homes crew are working seven days a week cleaning the American River, keeping it clean and safe much as we can. It's been an ongoing severe battle because we got more and more people staying on the American River. And we agreed there needs to be a lodge about the water, protect the water, but I think that 25 feet, 50 feet, it's kind of ridiculous. It should be more like 15 feet. The compromise would be like 15 feet, because that will greatly help us. Also, we need more help and support with the county picking up the trash that we collect, because they're supposed to be coming at least once a week, I'm told. They're not coming like once in three weeks. And the trash that builds up on the parkway, and we got people going through staring all over plate, Phil Serna, and it just gets being nuisance. We have to keep coming back and cleaning that trash we already cleaned up before. And so, we're cleaning it up. And right now, we've heard about this law you guys are voting on today, county and city, are voting on today about the homeless, about 25 feet and public places. And we're opposing that, because my Metro Homes crew fought and keep their communities and their camp sites clean. And we're getting more and more homeless people to do that, Phil Serna. And we're opposing this, because to us, it's against our civil rights, because it's no different. It's like, okay, my Metro Homes crew members cleaned every day and stayed the American River, and now they're saying, okay, now you gotta leave? You can't be here no more? We agree there needs to be something done to protect our water system. That's why we've been cleaning. That's personally why all my members here, they're here today, some of them are here today, they're my supervisors from my Metro Homes crews. I wanted you guys to meet them, because they're doing this day in, day out. Like I said, seven days a week, 365 days a year for the last five years now. And we really, we need to work together instead against each other, which I've been here several times talking to you guys about. You guys have been helpful, Phil Serna, Sue Frost, you guys have been really helpful. And we would like you guys to help us again and be there and work with us and find a way we could compromise where we could get trash picked up, where we're cleaning up, and work together as a team. So, that's what we're here for today.
Great, I appreciate your comments. Of course, we can't take any action on an item that's not on our agenda. Of course, you do have the opportunity to do exactly what you just did, is to bring to our attention issues of concern. I want to stress that I believe what you're referring to is some action that the City of Sacramento City Council may be taking. I'm looking at County Council's office, because I believe we received a memo about an ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, that the city may be considering as soon as today.
Yes, there is an ordinance under consideration by the City of Sacramento today to address illegal camping within hazard areas and that type of thing.
So, again, it's not that we don't appreciate your comments, we do. But I just want to make sure you understand that the better place to petition your concern may be two blocks down at City Hall, when they have their meeting this evening, I believe.
It's actually in the afternoon, that item.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Just a question on that for Lisa. So, if the city approves the ordinance for those portions of the parkway that are in the city, then that's the governing aspect of that. Obviously, city police can respond in those areas. And then, does it, would it be incumbent upon our rangers to enforce the same? Or how does that work?
Well, without getting into too many of the details, I don't believe that the city police has the authority to enforce in the parkway. They can enforce within the city limits that aren't in the parkway. And the rangers don't have the ability to enforce the city code that is being contemplated.
Okay, just from the standpoint of coordination, though, I think that's important, again, recognizing obviously the concerns about proximity to waterways and contamination and so forth. But I think it's important that the city understand, just as we understand on this end of it, about how that would be enforced in the event that it's put into place. So, and likewise, if we were to consider the same in those areas that are in the unincorporated area of the county, so.
Right. My office has already been in contact with the Parks Director, assuming that this ordinance gets passed, how they will coordinate. And then, obviously, there will be some effect possibly on the county if the folks that are currently in the city are being moved along to other places. So, it's something that I think the county should look at and consider, depending on the outcome of the ordinance hearing today and then subsequent possible court action.
Okay, great, thanks.
But I am in contact with the city attorney's office about it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you for what you're doing, Arthur.
Okay. I have no other speaker slips for items off the agenda, so we'll proceed with our regular agenda.
I move the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Supervisor Natoli. Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 3 and 4 for potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Item 39 is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Workshop.
Good morning. Oh, you had to put it down a little bit, thank you. Good morning, Chair Serna, board members. I'm Lynda Dorn, and I'm an environmental program manager with the Department of Water Resources, and I'm happy to be here talking to you today as the groundwater sustainability manager on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So first, I'd like to start off with what is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, also known as SIGMA. And since this is a new piece of legislation that was implemented in 2015, there are a lot of acronyms that go along with it, and I'll try to make certain to state them a few times before switching over to just using the acronyms. And what the legislation does is provides for local agencies to be formed for managing groundwater basins sustainably. This board has taken a couple of actions in the past, starting in 2016. The board approved principles that were in accordance with the Water Form Agreement that in managing the groundwater basins in the county, it should include broad representation of all interested stakeholders, management based on sound science, conjunctive use of groundwater and surface water supplies, and the promotion of countywide cooperation. Then in 2017, the board agreed to take on any areas where no local agency stepped up to the plate to manage the groundwater as a groundwater sustainability agency, or GSA. And the reason for doing this in unmanaged areas was to avoid the State Water Resources Control Board from coming in to manage an area. The way that the legislation was written is if there wasn't an area being managed by a local agency, then the State Water Resources Control Board can step in and manage that until a local agency does take over the management of their groundwater basin. And GSAs are known as regulatory agencies. They have the authority to levy fees for the implementation of groundwater sustainability plans. That's kind of the next big item to realize what the legislation does, is establishes that these groundwater sustainability agencies for a groundwater sub-basin will develop a groundwater sustainability plan, or JSP, that will be a roadmap for the future for how you will manage that groundwater locally and be sustainable. The GSPs for medium and high priority groundwater basins are due January 31st, 2022, and you'll hear me mention that date more than once, because the plans must be turned in by that date. If they are not received by the California Department of Water Resources by January 31st, 22, that is an automatic referral over to the State Water Resources Control Board for enforcement. This map shows the groundwater sustainability agencies, or GSAs, that are within the sub-basins, groundwater sub-basins in Sacramento County. There's four sub-basins. There is the North American Sub Basin, which as you can see is north of the American River. And then, and that's just the portion of that sub-basin that's in Sacramento County. The South American Sub Basin, the Consumnis Sub Basin, and then the Solano Sub Basin. So, two of these sub-basins are entirely within the county, which is the South American Sub Basin and also the Consumnis. Both the Solano and the North American Sub Basin are, also include other counties and other GSAs. So, again, the GSPs, groundwater sustainability plans, must be approved by January 31st, 2022, by all the GSA governing bodies within these sub-basins. And this next map is to give you all an idea of where the groundwater sub-basins are in relationship to your districts. I think the most interesting note is that on District 4, all four of the supervisory districts have some piece in that sub-basin. So what is a groundwater sustainability plan? It's a technical regulatory document that will define the characteristics of the sub-basin and establish how you will manage it sustainably into the future. Even though those plans are due on January 31st, 2022, you have a 20-year timeframe to come into compliance with proving that you are managing your groundwater sub-basin sustainably. And the bottom row on this triangle is kind of the place to start. These are called the undesirable results, and you want to make certain that you avoid these. And the groundwater sustainability plans will lay out a sustainable yield for each one of the basins that will ensure that you are not having any of these undesirable results within that basin. And also, already, there are two of the undesirable results that we believe will not prove out to be a significant problem, or possibly not a problem at all, which are seawater intrusion and land subsidence. Seawater intrusion generally occurs around coastal groundwater basins, along coastal areas. And land subsidence, most people have associated with the groundwater sub-basins in the San Joaquin County, or San Joaquin Valley, where they are critically overdrafted. The four sub-basins in Sacramento County's area are medium and high priority basins.
Can I ask a question about what you just said, in terms of saltwater intrusion? Is that, it may be true today, and I have no reason to question it. I don't know, I'm not as familiar with the science as you are about that. But let's say, with regard to the Solano Sub Basin, what is the likelihood that climate change may ultimately affect in the medium or long-term presence of saltwater and/or its impact to these groundwater sub-basins?
All right. And I guess for the long-term and thinking about climate change, that's really unknown at this point. But climate change does have to be discussed in relationship to each one of these undesirable results as part of the groundwater sustainability plan.
That's in the legislation?
Yes. Well, it's in the regulations that implement the legislation.
I have a question.
Sure, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. It's not quite on point with this, but because you're naming all these different sub-basins.
Uh huh.
What is it that defines, I mean, how do you, why are the boundaries defined where they are?
Yes.
I mean, it looks like north or south of a river, maybe, but it isn't all that way, and...
Yes. Yeah, it generally tends to be a river, but not always. And the boundaries are defined by the California Department of Water Resources through what's known as Bulletin 118. So, the state California Department of Water Resources is who set the boundaries for the groundwater basins.
But is it, I mean, is there like a break in the geology somehow that keeps the water from one sub-basin flowing to?
Distinctive.
Oh, yeah. Groundwater is kind of uncontrollable in that sense. You can't control how it flows in between basins.
Could the Consumnis Sub Basin flow into the San Joaquin Sub Basin?
Well, the eastern San Joaquin has turned in a groundwater sustainability plan, because they're a critically overdrafted basin. That shows that it does according to their model. And we'll be determining what that flow is as part of the groundwater sustainability plan development in the Consumnis Basin. Did that answer your question?
So, yes, the water can flow from downhill, basically.
One basin to another, and it generally, yeah. And it generally does.
Okay, so then, how does your department take that into account when you're making predictions about water availability in the future, if you don't know how, I mean, we know that it's flowing downhill, but how much and where is it?
Yeah, and actually, there's a model that will be developed, and is in the process of being developed, called the COSANA model. And that model will help in determining, at least for three out of the four sub-basins, how the groundwater is flowing and what volume is in between basins. So, we'll be able to use that model in the groundwater sustainability plan to better understand what the, I call it the inflow and outflow between the basins of groundwater.
So, could you say that the water, the sub-basin from the area we live in, the water could flow all the way to San Diego and beyond?
No, I don't think.
And they have the subsidence?
Yeah, there's, there would be a limit to how far. And each one of the groundwater sub-basins with their groundwater sustainability plan will identify what water is coming into their basin and what water is going out of their basin. So, how far it goes.
The, the...
Just curious.
No, the transfer between groundwater basins is going to be dependent on geology, as well as how much rainfall there's been, how much groundwater there is actually in the basin, in the strata. So, it may change. You may have times where one basin is flowing to the other, because, and that goes back, the groundwater basins defined by the state really establish the predominant geological characteristics of the water table there.
So, it is geological.
Yeah, so there's, as well as the surface watershed, and how much is influenced from infiltration rivers and things like that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Supervisor Frost.
My question relates to the conversation around the Delta tunnels and the fixes that have been suggested over time. And I know Supervisor Natoli's been in the middle of that conversation, but I've had those conversations with the agriculture community, where they have suggested that there could be some saltwater backflow as, that could actually impact our agriculture community in a big way. And so, my question is, do we have rights relating, you know, to how those fixes are going to impact our groundwater sustainability?
Right.
Do we have water rights?
Oh, with the water rights, I can say that as part of the legislation on SIGMA, that it was very clear that it does not affect water rights. Water rights are through the State Water Resources Control Board, and what water rights you have under them would remain the same under SIGMA. And this question, I believe what you're asking is how will it be dealt with in the water fix and potential seawater intrusion?
It could be devastating to our agriculture.
And I, and in the Solano Sub Basin, because that's the piece that Sacramento County has down into the Delta, that would be maybe the most susceptible. I don't believe that we're planning on addressing the water fix in that groundwater sustainability plan, but it's something that I can get back to you on and let you know for certain.
Just curious.
The saltwater intrusion, especially within the Delta, within the surface flow in the rivers, is definitely a concern as relates to how the Delta Tunnel may impact flows. And to the degree that that is incorporated in the modeling that's used for groundwater, that would be reflected. Again, it's got to work in concert with anything that's going on with that project, should it ever get to completion. An undesirable result of seawater intrusion into the groundwater sub-basin is something that would have to be managed. The plant, the work that's being done for SIGMA is not tied to any of the Delta actions or the Delta project, but it does sort of factor into the larger modeling world when it comes to identifying what could be impacting the sub-basins.
And Supervisor Frost, we are keeping an eye on the fact that they've just begun the environmental review process for the Delta project. And that is where we'll have the opportunity to evaluate what they've determined as far as the potential impacts, and then get our comments into that. I know Supervisor Natoli is, as you mentioned, very involved in the meetings, and we're keeping an eye on that and looking at all the meetings and progress that they're moving forward with that project.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Just to that point, the groundwater legislation did draw linkages in some, I've seen subsequent determinations of water board and otherwise, as it relates particularly to areas that are linked to the rivers, where they've linked the groundwater to the surface water. And I know Michael and Carrie and others are much more familiar with that than I am. But I do think that as, in particular with the Solano Sub Basin, as you said, Lynda, the intrusion into the surface waters, excuse me, to the groundwaters by saltwater and what the effect on certainly the surface water, can be very impactful. In fact, you know, two of the lower islands in the southern tip of the county, Twitchell and Sherman, have been purchased in large part by the state years ago. And, you know, a lot of it had to do with where they drew the line, the X2 line, for saltwater and, you know, with the tidal action there, and the inability for those that had irrigated for row crops in a lot of cases to sustain those crops, because of the, you know, the salts in the water and in the river, both in the San Joaquin and in the Sacramento River systems. And so, I think it's not only something we need to keep an eye on, but I think it's something that obviously we're engaged in. And I know we have, you know, obviously, staff members who are participating in those discussions. But it certainly, you know, could move upriver with some of the proposals, particularly to draw out water with a new straw, new intakes, you know, in the northern part of the Delta in Sacramento County. And so, I think it's something that we need to, and I don't know if, Michael, you want to add anything else on that. But to me, it's part of the overall picture here. And obviously, this focus has been certainly to the groundwater. But I think the linkages that they draw, and I think the impacts potentially, not just on agriculture, but on potable water uses. In, you know, I think a lot of people may think that because you have these river systems and sloughs and so forth, that that's the drinking water that supplies households and communities. It's not. They depend upon surface water. And whether you're in the city of Alton or in one of the Delta communities, unincorporated communities, and as well as homes and ranches. They have wells that they draw upon the water for their daily uses, you know, potable and in-house and in human and animal uses. They irrigate with waters out of the, you know, out of the rivers. But, so I think it's critically important. And I don't know if anything, you know, I just want to kind of fill in that little piece. And I think that the plans will take those things into account. But it's, you know, it's not unimportant, and I appreciate the question by my colleague, so.
Yeah, so do I. Thanks.
Yeah.
So, you mentioned the surface water, groundwater interaction, and of the six undesirable results... And of the six undesirable results, the area of surface water depletion is something that will have to be addressed immensely. There's kind of been a big data gap in that in all of the sub-basins. So that'll be occurring as part of the groundwater sustainability plan. And again, we'll rely a lot on the model that's being developed to help define what those interactions are. So with that, we'll move on to each one of the sub-basins, starting in the north and continuing to move south. There's the North American, um, GSP development that's underway. There are five groundwater sustainability agencies, GSAs, in the sub-basin on top of two counties to deal with, both, uh, Placer and Sutter County. And Sacramento Groundwater Authority is the plan manager and the grant administrator. And Rob Schwartz has shown up today to, um, represent those folks. And Sacramento Groundwater Authority is, um, also not only the lead for the development, but the grant administrator. And one thing to note about the North American sub-basin is that it has been managed for over 20 years as the outcome of working through the Water Forum Agreement, um, SCGA was formed. And they have been using conjunctive use of water, both surface and groundwater. And because of that conjunctive use, they've been able to show and demonstrate through, uh, measurements of groundwater that the basin is coming into a sustainable yield and being managed sustainably. So the funding of these plans, uh, comes from various sources in each one of the basins. But, uh, in the North American, the SGA, Sacramento Groundwater Authority members are who fund it along with the other GSAs from Placer and Sutter County. And then the California Department of Water Resources has provided a $1 million grant. For Sacramento County in this sub-basin, the Sacramento County Water Agency has a seat on the SGA board. And we, um, use Zone 41 funds for this GSP development in this basin. And most, uh, and this basin did not apply for a Prop 68 grant. So the $2 million is the overall cost for the GSP development. And then we'll move on to the South American, um, GSP development. There are four GSAs in this sub-basin. The Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority is the lead right now for GSP development. And they are also the grant administrator. And in this sub-basin, Sacramento County is a GSA over what is known as an overlapping area. That's areas where multiple local agencies requested to be the GSA for. And right now, um, and that's this area around the Consumnas River on the south side that's hatched on the map. And that's Oma Chumney, Hartnell Water District, Slough House Resource Conservation District, and Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority that all requested to be the GSA in that, in those areas. And they are currently working on a memorandum of understanding that would lay out the cost-sharing responsibilities for GSP development among all the GSAs in this area. So that would include the, um, Northern Delta, the county, and, um, Oma Chumney-Hartnell and Slough House Resource Conservation District. Once the overlapping, uh, request is completed, once the MOU is done in this area, then the county will not be over those overlapping areas. And the, uh, total cost for GSP development is 1.9 million. And that's funded by the SCGA, uh, board members themselves. That's a 16-member board that has a really diverse stakeholder, um, interest on it.
I'm going to interrupt Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, well, Linda can finish her comments, and I wanted to ask about this item.
Okay, all right, sure. And, um, in this area, uh, Zone 13 has been funding both the agricultural and agricultural residential, um, interests in the, in SC, on the SCGA board. And the Sacramento County has a seat on the SCA, SCA, SCGA board. Um, they've also received $1 million in, uh, state grants. And they did apply for a Prop 68 grant and have received a draft award for another million dollars. So that really raises the total cost on the GSP development to 2.9 million.
Okay, if I could, Linda.
Sure.
Yeah, and thank you for your work. I know that obviously you and Carrie and, and others have been involved, uh, in the ongoing discussions between the various parties. Two questions, maybe the, the easier of the two first. So how does, in this basin, the fact that the sanitation district qualified for the 280-plus million dollar grant to bring, uh, recycled treated water, uh, to agricultural, um, users in the area between Highway 99, I-5, down to roughly the Consumnas or Twin Cities Road? How does that factor into the planning processes? Because part of that grant was to, uh, afford the opportunity to, uh, I think, provide some, you know, more static levels of groundwater, but also improve water quality. Uh, and it would affect obviously the surface waters potentially because you would, um, there might be the opportunity, I think, even to, um, you know, flood up some areas that are in the refuge, uh, preserve areas, but also obviously provide agricultural, um, users water, um, assured water for their purposes. And so how does that factor into the planning process?
Well, it will now that this basin is doing a GSP, a groundwater sustainability plan. They had submitted an alternative in 2016. And that project wasn't yet defined, so it wasn't included in that alternative. And the state denied the alternative in 2018. So as a part of the GSP development, that project will need to be taken into considerations and what its contributions are to the groundwater basin to help it, to help it manage itself sustainably.
Right, and the date, and the state was very delayed in issuing the determination on alternative. So that goes to my second question, which I, maybe a little more difficult. But, um, we have 15 months to basically have a draft plan for that basin available to state. And then, as you said, by January 2022, we have to have a final plan, recognizing, uh, certainly the funding contributions. And again, thanks, you know, county staff for your leadership, uh, in representing obviously areas that are not within water districts, but certainly to be, I think, engaged in, you know, in meaningful ways with the various parties in this. And recognize we still have this unresolved, even though people are working on MOU, uh, where are we with that? Uh, you know, $2 million sounds like a lot of money, uh, but 15 months, uh, to, and we got a late determination on the alternative. So where are we in that process? And I assume we are going to make that date, uh.
Oh, yes. Um, actually, there's a consultant that has been selected. But the, uh, budget and scope of work has not been finalized by the SCGA board. And they're working on that today, is my understanding. Darrell Eck, who couldn't be here as the plan manager or the G, grant administrator, is, uh, currently working on it. So I suspect that the consultant will have an outline of how they will get the work done in the short timeframe that they have.
So everybody understands the urgency because again, again, as I've said many times, and you said earlier, the last thing we want is the state to come in and intervene and to, um, tell us how it's going to be. We need to have self-determination, and that's in part, obviously, the struggle here is because of the interest of management at the very local level when it comes to water districts and so forth. But, so is that something that, again, so SCGA is responsible for, for that? How's that work?
They're, um, well, they're working on the MOU, so it will be laid out in there who has the responsibility for the development. But, um, SCGA being the largest GSA in the area has taken on the responsibility for being the grant administrator and developing the GSP. It's kind of like they're the plan managers, similar to what we discussed in the North American sub-basin. So it'll be through the MOU with SCGA as the lead, I think, is a good way to, to look at what their role is. And, um, as far as being under the gun in a short timeframe, the, having submitted the alternative will help with that because a lot of the work that would go into a GSP actually was done for the alternative. And DWR identified what the deficiencies are. So, um, it will help that they've had an alternative.
Okay, well, just one, one more piece of that, though, that I think is in very important detail is that them not accepting the alternative, then the baselines have changed, basically you move. Uh, and again, that makes the, the hill that much, you know, uh, bigger to climb, I guess. And so that is going to, I think, result obviously in some very challenging discussions about then how we implement, uh, whatever needs to be implemented at the local level to get to those baselines. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? Because again, you know, that to me speaks to the urgency of what this is about because those are not going to be easy tasks. We have information available, but the, but the task at hand is submit a plan that then has this broader endorsement that can be achievable over the 20-year timeframe.
Right, and it is the sustainable yield, I believe, that you're talking about changing. And, um, you'll also see that that will most likely happen in the North American sub-basin that had a groundwater management plan also. That, um, the, the challenge of changing that number, the sustainable yield, and then, uh, kind of renegotiating and looking at how groundwater is managed in the basin. I mean, that's the, that's the whole purpose of doing the GSP. So the challenge will be the coordination amongst the GSAs and within SCGA themselves. So, um, I'm not sure if that was a satisfying answer.
Well, I, I, again, if I just could, one other thing, to, to that point, though, I think one of the challenges here to, to, you know, I think the county's certainly done a very, um, credible job in representing the agricultural residential and to the degree that we have agricultural interests that aren't represented. But we have this urban agriculture and ag-res interface, um, that, you know, doesn't, is not non-existent in the north area, but certainly is to a much lesser degree, I think, the, some of the tensions that, that they're borne out in that. And the ability then to spread whatever costs are associated with ultimately implementation. Again, the county certainly through Zone 13, again, I give credit to, you know, Michael and you and Carrie and others for, you know, looking at budgets and bringing that forward. And I think the application for Prop 68 grant brings additional dollars in, assists with the effort. But that's just a piece of it. The, 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 the long-term piece is that how do you then spread those costs for whatever those strategies are? They're going to get to the sustainable yield. And it is different in the South Basin, much, far different, at least in my view, than, uh, you, you know, maybe with other areas in the county, even with the Solano piece of it, where it's largely agriculture in some smaller towns. Here you have that interface and you have development that's going to occur at the county level and, you know, incorporated area. You also have cities, uh, particularly cities in Rancho Cordova and Elk Grove, to some degree, City of Sacramento, that will grow and, 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 you know, and have to be accommodated within the context of groundwater and how they then supply, or we supply to the water agency to growing areas. So I guess why I asked you to elaborate a little bit, because I think that is a key piece here. And 15 months is not a very long period of time to then find consensus around a plan, but also then look at that, in that plan, you have to tell how you're going to pay for the implementation.
Yes.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. It's an immense challenge. And it's, and even the, the two or three years preceding have been a challenge in just trying to get, uh, parties to the same table. And the department and Linda in particular has been on the, the forefront of quite a bit of outreach and collaborative meetings and, and developing the relationships, um, so you get past the, the doubts and any mistrust. And there's clear understanding amongst all the parties of the urgency.
Okay.
And Linda's doing a tremendous job in, um, diffusing the, 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 the initial just reluctance and resistance to sit down. And so that's, that's where we are. The, the, the ball has moved quite a bit in the past couple of years. And I, I have no doubt that we're going to meet the goal of the 15 months. Yeah, it's absolutely challenging, and nobody who's involved in, in that sub-basin has any lack of understanding of that.
No, and I, and I concur with the good work, Michael. I said, I've said it a couple, I'll say it one more time, that I appreciate your leadership, that of Carrie and Linda and others who've been involved in, in different aspects of this and, uh, recognizing the personalities, the politics, and I think just the, you know, the seriousness, uh, and the gravity. And then, you know, how we pay for this going forward.
Right, and, and we've, and we've discussed before, um, sort of the, the complexity of the role of the county. One, having a seat on SCGA. Two, representing an unmanaged areas. And then just holistically, as the county wanting to ensure that all the groundwater basins are, are, meet the sustainability requirement of the regulation without, uh, the implication that we're treading on local agencies' authorities. And that's, that is a, uh, it's a complicated process, complicated negotiation. So, uh, much work has been done, uh, to that end, and there's, there's some more to do. But MOUs being developed, um, and scopes of work being, uh, developed right now is an excellence, excellent sign that we're going to be able to get to that goal.
And I would just say that, you know, it was on our agenda a few weeks ago, but the leadership, I think, and certainly the decision to, you know, be into, on the Prop 68 and to, you know, again, recognizing that required some, you know, potential match and so forth, and some additional work on behalf of our staff. Again, I think that's gone a long way too, helping to, you know, solidify some of the relationships that are going to be important to the success of this long term, so thanks.
Okay.
Bless you, bless you, bless you.
Moving on. So the next sub-basin is the Consumnas. And in their GSP development, that involves seven GSAs. We have been working under a framework agreement that has been before your board a couple of times and will be soon again, that will get us through how we work together through the GSP, um, development. It, not the implementation phase. In this sub-basin, the Water Forum is the facilitator and the plan manager. And, um, the county is the grant administrator. So that's why, um, you see more things coming to the board for grant administration in this sub-basin. The total cost for the GSP is 2.8 million. And the county, um, has a larger area in this sub-basin that we're a GSA. So we have taken on more of the responsibility, not only because of the area, but, um, just with the sub-basin not having had plans in place for managing groundwater historically that, uh, we've, we've put more effort and stepped up to the plate here and therefore have been using more, uh, Zone 13 funding for developing this groundwater sustainability plan. But the other GSAs have also contributed through a cost-share agreement. And then the Water Forum provides in-kind services. And we did receive a $1 million, um, state grant. And then most recently, the Prop 68, we have a draft award of $750,000. Do you have a question? No, okay. So, um, that's the Consumnas, uh, sub-basin. And then lastly, we have the Solano, uh, sub-basin that has six reclamation districts in its boundaries. But five of the GSAs have entered into a collaboration agreement that has been to your board a couple of times. That also lays out how we will work together to develop a groundwater sustainability plan. And, um, Solano Sub Basin has taken the lead on that and is the plan manager and the grant administrator. And we have Chris Lee here today as, um, representing the Solano Sub Basin. And that Solano Sub Basin GSA is made up of seven agencies, um, or entities also. Just to give you an idea of the complexity of governance for getting these GSPs developed and managing groundwater in these basins. The total, uh, GSP cost is 2.5 million for this basin, and that's funded by the member agencies. Sacramento County has been providing in-kind services. They also received a $1 million state grant. And they're, um, have a draft award for the Prop 68 of $500,000. So that would raise the total cost to 3 million for this sub-basin's GSP development.
Is it accurate then, with the four basins, we're going to be approaching $10 million just for the plan development?
Uh, more, yeah.
I was just using your numbers off the.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I didn't include the Prop 68 funding in the total cost because those awards aren't finalized yet, and we're hoping in the Solano sub-basin that it actually goes up.
So maybe $12 million?
Just for the development of the plans.
The plans, right.
Right, because implementation is a whole different set of costs. And so in summary, I wanted to list out some milestones and where we will be going. As you can see, the 2022 date is bolded and bigger because that is the most important date that's coming right up. The requirement to have those plans submitted by January 31, 2022, they have to go through each one of the GSA's governing board. So really, you have to have a draft plan available on the street for public comment by about June or July of 2021. And one of the things that I forgot to mention was that there are very detailed outreach requirements in SIGMA. So it's very specific for who you are supposed to engage, and that is the beneficial users of water, of groundwater, and in your area. And they actually go to the point of listing out in the regulations who they find those to be. So one of the things that we are doing in each one of the sub-basins is starting a public outreach process. And the Consumnas sub-basin is first up with having some public meetings coming up in March in the evening. And then the Solano sub-basin is looking at June. I think the North American sub-basin will be later in summer after we have more modeling results. And the South American sub-basin, of course, needs to get their consultant on board and their community outreach plan developed to know when we're going to start those, but I'd suspect before the end of the year. The starred areas on here, the formation of GSAs, the Prop 1 grant, starting the GSP, those are all big milestones that we've already reached. And then, of course, the biggest milestone is in the end to prove through data and technical information that you are managing your basin sustainably. So the implementation of these plans after 2022, that's where there will be a lot of funding that's going to be necessary for just the administrative piece of it, which is annual reports, five-year plans, and doing the monitoring to support those reports and GSP updates in each one of the sub-basins. That doesn't even take into account the management actions and projects that will be identified in these plans. So funding is going to be a key piece of the discussions over the next year and a half because that also has to be included in your groundwater sustainability plan. And the county is working with a consultant right now, we just started in the last month, and to take a look at how we could potentially fund at a minimum for the county, the implementation of our areas where we're a GSA, but maybe also develop a process that could be used by other groundwater sustainability agencies throughout the various sub-basins if they should choose to do so. But we're just in the initial stages of working with a consultant to determine.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
So you mentioned, or you made reference to the fact that really the legislation, the regulations associated with it are intended to promote sustainability, and that's, you know, that's a very often, these days, often-used term, can mean a lot of different things to different people. But I just want to make sure I understand, the way it is being referenced here, it has essentially two meanings. One, it has a quantitative meaning in terms of the yield in the basin, protecting the yield in the basin, and the quality of the water in the basin. And is that second part, the quality, is that really measured based on the data that you would collect and measure, based on the one slide you had where you had the triangle with undesirable results at the bottom, and making sure that those six issues are at a minimum, the threats?
Yes, water quality is what, to not have any water quality degradation is one of those sustainability factors, and you do have to go out and monitor and collect water samples to show that water quality is not being degraded.
But it's not just that, it's also land subsidence, right?
Yes, it's the other five in relationship. Water quality is just one aspect.
Gotcha. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Linda, I guess one of the questions I have around that kind of dovetails with the Chair Serna was asking about, but is, in looking at the sustainability, are we engaging regularly and with the agricultural commissioner in this county? Because what, you know, has been notable certainly to me, and again, obviously, you've certainly done outreach to the Farm Bureau, but is a shift, a pretty significant shift in going from either, in some cases, grazed lands or row crops, forage areas for cattle and other livestock, to a couple of different areas, one aquaculture, which requires a good deal of groundwater in the areas, and secondly, to trees and vines. Conversion to trees is really noticeable. You can drive around the county this time of the year and see orchards that have been installed just in the last season, over the last year. And we're seeing, you know, particularly with your nuts, in some cases, fruits, but, and, you know, what that means in the calculations to sustainable yield, because, you know, we've seen some dairies that have ceased operation and that, you know, had year-round usage, but may go to, again, to crops that require irrigation longer periods of time, even with drip systems and so forth. So how much are we engaging beyond, obviously, the GSAs and, you know, knowledgeable folks from the water world, I think that particularly as relates to the South American parts, but to the Consumnas sub-basin and maybe Solano as well, although the conversion hasn't been as great, gone to vines in some cases. I guess I'm curious, because that, to me, if you look at that 20-year period and you look at what's happened over the last decade, and a lot of those folks are moving from other areas, either north or south, coming into Sacramento County, and I think availability of groundwater, climate, market forces are all a part of that.
Yes. And I'm not sure how engaged we've been with the Ag Commissioner, but we should be. So, and there's multiple departments within the county that actually SIGMA touches upon. So we need to make certain that we're talking to planning, and we are. And then also the Environmental Management Department with well permitting.
Okay. But I would suggest that the agricultural commissioner and certainly EMD, that those folks on a regular basis, maybe if you have a standing committee in-house, because they're tracking acreage, they're tracking, you know, certainly production numbers, but they also know what, you know, what the cost of, you know, water associated, that cost, but the water associated with, you know, certain land types, but also the certain types of crop types. And I think that's going to be important because if you look at where we were 20 years ago and where we are today, and where we may project to be relative to that, particularly in agricultural areas, and I don't know that the GSAs, the smaller irrigation districts and so forth, have that kind of data available to them. They're going to need that in the plans. But
Yeah.
The Ag Commissioner is critical, you know, in well information, you know, how deep they're going and what, you know, what the, you know, yield per acre foot, you know, is projected for the lands that they're irrigating with. And that can, that can change, but the change is one where much harder crops are going in, in the sense that they're not, you know, seasonal as much as they're going to be in there for decades in some cases with those orchards, so.
Yes, I'd say both Solano and Consumnas.
Yes, and some South American, there's a little bit in the South, well, there's some in the South American as well. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Frost.
You were mentioning funding, and I was wondering, and that you had retained someone to take a look at how you would fund it. Does the funding look like, like just an increase in our water bill or a fee, or do we even know? Is there any funding that comes from the state? So can you just kind of give me a little bit?
I'll give it, I'll give it my best shot, and then, of course, Michael can, or Carrie can jump in at any time. So with the state, they have been providing grants for just during the GSP development. The last proposition that had to do with a water bond did not pass, and that would have included more money for implementation. So I guess I'm saying, don't count on more money from the state at this point for implementing these plans. Each one of the GSAs have the legal authority to do rates or fees to pay for implementation. And so that's kind of what needs to be looked at for each one of the GSAs. And how that will actually look and how much has not been determined, I think kind of a general idea is on the water purveyor side, that something would be encapsulated with those folks and differently for Ag or AgRes. But the other thing that we'll be doing with the consultant that's hired is building off of the work that they have currently been doing in the South American sub-basin for Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, because they've been doing a rate and fee study, knowing that they need to come up with a different funding method for implementation of management actions in that sub-basin. But we will be coming back with more.
So it's the water purveyors that will assume the cost and pass it on to the consumer through there?
In parts of the sub-basin, but not entirely, because there is the agricultural and agricultural residential piece also that has to be looked at. And that's been funded, at least in the South American basin, through Zone 13 funds, which are only meant for planning. They're not meant for projects. So we're going to have to find another way.
Thanks.
Are we tracking the water resiliency bond that they're contemplating for November ballot that would have, you know, a variety of things in there?
Yes.
Yeah, no, we're looking at that and we're trying to identify where we may have some opportunity, either for projects or for implementation. Yeah, working with Natasha on that.
Okay.
So.
Not like we haven't been asked a question all along.
No, they've been coming all along. I guess the last thing I'd like to point out on this slide is that we do have an overall website for the multiple basins within the county. It's very general, but we try to keep it up to date, and you could always take a look on that and see if there's anything interests you.
Great. Thank you for a very informative presentation. Obviously, a lot of detail to, a lot of moving parts, and appreciate your work and the other staff of our water department. So any questions for Ms. Dorn that haven't already been asked?
Thank you.
This is a workshop, no action on this item. Appreciate the time and energy you've put into this.
You've got plenty of other actions that will be coming to you, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and no one signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, so we can take your nominations. That's item 40.
Okay.
You are continuing to March 10, the Children's Coalition, continuing to April 7, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, and the Rio Linda Elvera Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Continue to March 24, please.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to March 10.
Okay, and Supervisor Natoli.
Just a moment, I'm getting to my material. Go to the next one, I'll come back to it. Thanks.
Galt Arno, well, you have Galt Arno, you're next on that. So we'll jump to Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to March 10 and close the filing period.
Okay. Public Health Advisory Board, Supervisor Serna.
Chiefs are recommending continuing the item to March 24.
Okay. And then we have the Recreation and Park Commission, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to March 10.
Now we have the Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Peters.
I'd like to reappoint Telote Esmelesh as a family member.
Okay, and then Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Bradley Luth and continue the rest to 324.
Okay, we'll note that. Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Kate Saunders and request the process be waived.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Are you ready, Mr. Natoli? Okay, and so you have.
Continue to March 24.
For youth or for?
For youth.
For the Youth Commission.
Right.
So continue to March 24. And we have the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Supervisor Natoli.
Nominate Jasmin Osmaney.
And then Supervisor Serna.
Please continue the remaining to April 7.
Okay. South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Kennedy.
Please continue to March 24.
And Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to April 7.
And we have the Veterans Advisory Commission, Supervisor Frost.
I nominate Eric Hanson.
Okay, and we'll go back to the.
Galt Arno.
Well, actually, we had one before that. We have Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, I would continue that to April 7. We don't have any current applicants.
And then the Galt Arno Cemetery District.
Yes, nominate the incumbent, Guy Rutter.
Okay. That concludes your nominations.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Next are your comments from the county executive.
No comment this morning.
And then Supervisor comments.
Okay, I would like to make a comment, and I know we do have an adjournment from Supervisor Peters. I just wanted to, again, thank on the record our CEO for what I thought was an outstanding opportunity last week during our annual retreat process to have probably one of the better discussions that ensued on the subject of, it started with us on the subject of methamphetamine, and it included a little bit more broadly later in the morning, discussion about homelessness and affordable housing. And Mr. Gill, you used that opportunity, and this was a public meeting, so I'm not really stating anything new, but you stated during the meeting an interest in a housing bond, and that's the first time, I think, all of us had heard in a public setting that that was of interest to you, and I think you heard a lot of positive feedback at the time. So I don't know if you've since given thought to how you might want to not lose the momentum of interest that was expressed at the retreat on that subject, but if you have any ideas about how you might want to bring something back, maybe in a more formal way to the board in a public setting, that informs us of what opportunities we might have and when, I'd like to encourage you to think through that and, and work with the Clerk's Office and County Council's Office to get that scheduled. I don't know if you have any thoughts now on the subject.
Absolutely. I think we've been giving a lot of thought to it. We do want to come back in the workshop-type setting and get some action. What we want to do is kind of walk the board through what is the county obligation when it comes to homeless. We do the health, drugs, mental health, and all the programs we have in there. We've not had that discussion. We did it in when we had, when we got hit with the recession, but we did it in the context of closing facilities. Since then, we've not come back and told you all the different programs we have. Second piece that we put in place a couple of years ago is, for lack of a better expression, sort of our sheltering program. How are we going to, folks in the unincorporated, we see them, what are we going to do with those folks? And it's in that context that I and our team is going to be looking at, is that is there an opportunity for some kind of housing bond or something to get folks off the street, and what would that look like? As I think, what we're weighing that against is that we do have some big fiscal challenges, too.
Sure.
But it doesn't mean that we should not start looking, and if there's opportunities to pursue that. We also do want to spend a little bit of time with you to give you an idea that, again, we've not had this discussion, is that countywide, we have an obligation for job training, getting our homeless folks ready to go get jobs. I know that we have an independent board setup that helps us with that, but there's programs within the county. And then the last piece in there is affordable housing ends up taking different meaning to different folks. And there's a regional housing need assessment that SECOC gives us. That number's been out there. They're going to revise the number. So we're looking at that, what kind of production have we had? We haven't had. So the two. So the two and four is where we want to concentrate with the board on how can we start proactively start addressing those. So we need a little bit of time to pull it all together, but we do want to come in the spring and have that conversation.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Tolle.
Yes, just a kind of related matter, not so much on the housing piece, but you mentioned your comments, and again, this board certainly has been kept apprised of some of the fiscal challenges, this and coming years. And one of the things I wanted to put out there early enough, since we're now in late February, you're working on budget development and such with departments, I've had the opportunity in recent weeks to talk both with the Human Services Coordinating Council, Children's Coalition, offer some comments to them. And so now, one of the things I think is very important, as we engage in budget discussions and to do it early enough rather than just at the, you know, kind of the end when you publish something, is to engage our advisory commissions, and whether it's the Mental Health Board, Human Service Coordinating Council, Public Health Board, Children's Coalition, there's, you know, probably, you know, 10 or so, give or take, that we should engage. I mean, we have advisory commissions for a reason. They advise us on certainly matters of importance from the policy framework, but budgets obviously play very clearly into that, and it may be a task that obviously has some additional work behind it, but in my view, I think that we're better served for folks that are appointed and delegated and designated to advise this body. And if we're going to be looking at either, you know, holding line, maybe some rollbacks in some cases, some, you know, different changes and/or challenges, I guess I would ask that we engage those folks. And again, I don't, you know, how you go about that task, obviously, I would leave to you and your, you know, executive staff, but I just think it's important to do that. And they've offered, at least in the two sessions that I've been there, you know, interest, obviously, ongoing interest, but I think could, you know, serve a very important aspect of budget advice as we go forward. The other thing I just wanted to offer was is that the Veterans Advisory Commission, we've had that in place now for, you know, well over a year since we've actually had full complement there. I'd like to have a presentation from the advisory commission to kind of know what their work, you know, plan is, and, you know, how they believe things are going, and, you know, how we might be able to assist. Obviously, we have a veteran services officer that, along with our flow staff, that, you know, certainly served to help them with their meetings, but, you know, do they feel that's productive? Are they able to engage in a way that's meaningful? And I'd like to see that in at some point this spring to have a, you know, a presentation by our Veterans Advisory Commission, along with our Youth Commission once again, which is always very helpful, and that kind of falls depending upon where they are in their school year and so forth, but...
And I'll just make one comment. I appreciate Supervisor Tolle making mention of the interest in having some of these presentations. And again, as a, just as a friendly reminder to our CEO and our clerk of the board, days like this where we're about to conclude the entirety of our day's open session within an hour and 15 minutes, I think it goes without saying that we actually have the time available to, to have those presentations and perhaps even have those presentations and not even get into an afternoon session. So I appreciate the fact that we're managing our time efficiently. Last few meetings have been relatively brief, I mean, compared to some of the more full agendas that I know we've all experienced in the past, but I certainly would not object as chair this year to, to using some of that open time, if you will, to, to have some of those presentations if members are interested in hearing from various advisory bodies and whatnot. Good. Okay. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I have an adjournment today.
Excuse me, Chairman, can I interrupt? I apologize, but we, I need to make a correction for the record on the vote sheets for the Galt Arno Cemetery District. Guy Rutter was already appointed, so we're just going to continue that over to April 7th.
Yes. Thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Peters.
Last year in November, the board had their annual Heroes of Human Services event, and there were a number of individuals that were honored, and among them was 103-year-old Dorothy Kabody, who'd been helping and caring for others as a member of the Orangeville Women's Club for more than 60 years. And for the past seven years, she'd been focusing her attention on the needs of children under the care of Sacramento Children's Receiving Home with help from the Orangeville Women's Club. She hadn't slowed down at all, but on January 20th, she quietly passed away at her home, the very home that she and her husband, late husband of 44 years, Marco, had built in 1940 when they moved to Fair Oaks. And in that home, they raised their two daughters and two sons, and today she's survived not only by four children, but seven grandchildren and nine great-grandchildren. In her generous spirit, she wishes to have donations in her memory made to the Orangeville Women's Club to continue doing the important work she and the club have been doing for the community for more than half a century. So it's the way we'd all like to go in our sleep, right? At 103. So in light of that, I'd like to adjourn today in the memory of Dorothy Kabody.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we'll certainly do that. I just want to, before the gavel comes down and we adjourn in Dorothy's memory, just take the opportunity to remind folks to please get out and vote if you haven't already. Our primary is next Tuesday. So if there's no further business, we will adjourn in memory of Dorothy Kabody, and I believe we're going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you. All right. Thanks.
Yeah?